It's afternoon, so we appreciate everybody coming out early today. It's a little disruptive today, but you really helped us a lot to get through this. First item on our attendance today, and this is just a little bit of discussion. We won't go too deep into this topic today because Angela's still working on some numbers for the selling's house expenses that we've been out. She's got some of that compiled and she's looking into the remainder of those expenses so we can have a summary. But I have this list of things, I told you I had my list and this is it, that was furnished some time ago of things that needed to be done. There may be a few incidental things that have been done, but we know a little more work that goes in addition to this since we've had the freeze up there, broke our plumbing in our restrooms, and what maybe that's got to be repaired in addition to this. I guess from the council point of view today, I'd be asking, how many people do we need to get to look at this list to give us pricing on them? If we're going to do these repairs, how many folks do you want to look at this? I haven't gone to a carpenter yet or a contractor. If you will tell me how many people you want me to get to look at this list, then I'll be glad. Or if you want to look at the list or approve the list before getting anyone to look at it, maybe do it that way. So I'll make everybody a little copy before we leave here today. I'd like to kind of nail this down in the next few weeks. Ms. Spikes and some of her people are going to want to come back and meet with us again pretty soon, and so I want to get going on this and not let it wait too long. Because we're not through with the melting solid house, so we certainly do wrap that up, I think, before too much more time passes.
Well, can you get three people to bid on?
I would hope, that's what I had in mind.
And this time, let's make it planer, don't pay anybody until the job is done, or half the way, when they get over half finished, say that time of money. We need to make sure this time that the job is done and done right.
That's right.
Because we're going over, I think, the second time, and maybe it's third or whatever.
Last time we did, a little bit in a rush, I believe, and wasn't built in compliance with the ADA compliance needs, and different things were done that worked on probably. That's been pointed out, we don't need to keep doing that redo, as you say. So I'll try to follow up, I want to give you a little bit of hearing put as to what you want to bid on, as well if we want to bid apples to apples here if we get these guys to look at it, so we know what they're bidding to do. And I would say probably that we need to add those repairs that we know it's got to be done to this list, especially where the plumbing's broken off pieces, water pours on the turn on bathrooms.
I'd say add everything that we're going to have to do, just get it over with. Add it all in there, get a price on all of it, and don't pay the last payment until it's all been inspected and approved. There's no use of this being going on, they say ten years.
That's a long period that's been dragged out, and we really don't want to continue that model, we're just not satisfied, anyone, you can't make a real plan for the house that we've not finished. I wish, I wish in some ways that we had someone occupying that property, portions of it, because it seems the building would do better if somebody was in it every week. It'd just be once in a while, if somebody goes in there, there's always chances that something's going to be wrong when they haven't been up there.
I think until everything's up to code and everything's like it's supposed to be, nobody should be in there, because we would be liable if there's any problems since we know of all these faults and that it's not up to code, so really there shouldn't be anybody in the house until that's taken care of properly.
Don't argue with that point by all. At this point, I don't guess anyone should have any significant injury from being inside it, but if they did, they might say, "You guys didn't have this fit for a tour, you let me come in here and get hurt."
And I think Tim's going to have to have an input on this, because there's some question about the way the doors swing, and it's going to be a group effort to look over that list, so Tim's going to need a copy of the list, too, to make sure that everything is in compliance, and there was something about the thresholds and some more fire safety things. So it's going to take more than just the council saying, "Yeah, we want to do it," it's going to take Tim and Matt going in and saying, "Okay, this is what has to be done, and this is the way it has to be done," and it's not just simple, it's just approving that list and getting bids.
We met with somebody back...
We met with Mr. Moore and with Andrea Clement.
Yeah, two, three years ago.
This has been a couple of years ago now.
After the labor buildup.
Probably when that list was being made.
Oh, you've seen, talked to this list?
I have not seen the list, we just, Andrea was taking notes as we walked through and saw things, and what's compiling that.
They need to talk to Andrea and get her comping the notes, if she was making the notes.
That was back, that was before they built bathrooms, I guess.
I've been over since the bathrooms have been there.
I spoke to her earlier this morning, she's only going to get out, go to the doctor, she's sick, not feeling well at all, terrible, borderline blue cold, she don't know what it is, but she's had fever, she's staying in. She'll be well in a few days, I'll get here with her. Just wanted to follow this up with your aspiration, I'd like some leeway to go ahead and talk to some people once we get decided what's got to be done, I'd like to get it out in my hands, and some people can give us a price on it, so we can do that. Item two, we're going to move on from there with that understanding that we'll try to get our list correct through the compliant part of it, and then before we allow anyone to give us any numbers. We've had reason to bring up item two. Our accounting firm has come to us with the idea that we're possibly going to have hitches with the retirement system over the way we report our pay period cycles, and we were thinking about paying every two weeks and have a end date to change when we cut off the paydays, and I'm going to let Amy and Angela give you all the reasons behind this. We wanted to bring it to the council's attention before we make any changes. Sometimes employees don't understand changes like this, and we want to make sure that the transition is done in compliance with our reporting needs, and yet we still want to work as closely as we can with our folks that work for us on a day-to-day basis. The carpenters met yesterday and discussed this, and they've taken the message out to employees, and some of them have questions already concerning these changes, too. And so Angela, we're going to start with you, we're going to end with Amy on the comments about why we're doing this, and how it affects us on our payroll and our reporting needs to Alabama.
Okay. The retirement systems of Alabama, the way we've always dealt with them and most every other organization that's a member of them, of course, you know, each week y'all are cutting so much that goes into your retirement. Once a month, we were doing a report where we would send those contributions to them and the portion that the city contributes. Well, now, because there's been so much, I guess, discrepancies with people working over a certain threshold of hours where we should be cutting them retirement or contributing to their retirement, you know, that's why it's so important, and we're really going to have to hold our, everybody speak to the fire, so to speak, on this one, because you've got to be able to account for every hour that every person works, whether they're part-time, if they're working in the splash pad, if they're a full-time employee, we have to account for every hour that every person works to show whether that's a regular work hour, a sick day, a vacation day, leave without pay, maybe leave due to disciplinary, because all those things can come back into play later on in a person's retirement. They could come back on the city and want that time, and we would have to pay it. Things are changing this year, where before retirement systems did everything, now they're putting it back on us. And, I mean, we have to, we have to report, and I think the fire contributes differently, the police officers' contributions are different. Where before, another new thing they're implementing is overtime, where people would have forty-hour work week plus overtime, now retirement system is capping the amount of contributions that can go in to retirement on overtime, because it was getting so out of whack, it was really becoming a big expense, so they're capping the amount of contributions they're going to put in for overtime. And right now, the way we're set up on our pay, payroll, every time a payroll is done, we've got to report to retirement systems, on every employee, everybody that gets a check, we've got to do that report every week. And what's got us out of whack, right now, the police officers are the only ones, I think, that are good, they're held back, they get paid every two weeks. Everybody else, I think the fire, Tim, is, what are y'all's end date?
We end on Wednesday, we get paid on Friday.
Ours, like mine and Amy's, and the majority of the cities, our pay-in day is Thursday, and I think the police is Saturday.
Well, it's Friday before.
So, you know, we're kind of all over the place on that. And legally, we're doing payroll on Thursday with time cards that are being turned in for an employee for that Thursday, basically saying that, okay, you know, we're saying, "You're going to be here your eight hours, you're not working overtime, you're not going to leave sick, you know, we're paying you for this time." That's got to change, if nothing else. We have got to back that up to where we do payroll where it ends on Wednesday.
Wednesday.
That way, if you work Wednesday, you have to go home sick, or you work a couple hours overtime, that can be shown on that report, because it all comes into play on your retirement. And you certainly don't want to do anything that's going to mess somebody's retirement up and how they get paid, so there's some changes that are going to have to be made. We kicked around the idea of going to an ever-two-week pay period instead of doing it every week, and I don't think that's going over very well, which is good, I mean, we need to hear that from the employees, I think they need to have an input on it. It's kind of split down the middle, I think half are okay with it and the other half are not, because they depend on that weekly check. And there's just some things we're going to have to change, but we're definitely going to have to change the pay.
We can't anticipate that they'll be here all day on Thursday, or that they won't work overtime. Our reporting can be incorrect on that final day a lot, and we just can't afford for it to go in wrong. Eventually, all this reporting will be online, and once it's recorded, it's permanent. Fixing an error is going to be almost impossible, once it goes online.
So basically, to get this straight, and everybody still get paid once a week, you're going to have a short week, one week, and then you're going...
Of the four days.
Right, and then the next week, you're going to have six...
You're regular five.
Okay, you're regular, so I mean...
And you want, you don't really lose that day, you don't get it back when they leave one day or retire, or, I mean, it's anywhere else you work, normally, you're held back that first week anyway, we just...
And that's something that I think we do need to talk about with all future hires, is to hold them back, so eventually, everybody will be held back that week, and if you want direct deposit, you're going to be able to have direct deposit, because it's my understanding that that's one of the problems.
We can, because we're not going to buy it.
Right, so I think with all new hires, it ought to be understood that they're automatically held back that week, and that way, eventually, which will be a long time, long time, but, I mean, if you don't start somewhere, you're not going to, so that's something else to think about. And I can understand why people wouldn't want to just get paid twice, twice weekly, and I can see that, you know, it might be a big deal for you, that first week, getting everybody, but after that first week, everything's going to be sad, so I guess a lot depends on your willingness, we appreciate you. And the ones that get paid every two weeks, they can still get paid like they do, the police?
They're fine, because they're already held back.
Okay, they are, okay, so it would just be everybody else would do the four day and then the pigs. I mean, it's very confusing, but their retirement systems is the one that's making, they're making these changes, and we don't have a choice, we're going to have to do some things that are probably not going to be hard or...
And we already changed, like, if you weren't over on Thursday, you don't get paid that until the next week, and we have to remember, or have to remember anybody that worked over to pay on the next week, because I've already done payroll, because I do it on Thursday, because they get paid Friday morning, and there's no way I have to do payroll Friday and then do it Friday, Angela do a report, I mean, there's just no way to do that fast.
Because our payroll will have to match exactly what we're going to do with retirement systems.
If you work, just say you work overtime on that Thursday, and you put it on the next week, and they only work their off-a-day.
Then I have to remember that it was from the prior week, because I would be that...
Yeah, but it's not a four, it wouldn't be a full forty-hour work week, so they wouldn't be able to...
The way it is right now, they're getting paid for their overtime the following week, if it happens like on that Thursday, but then they're off-a-day the next week, you know, those were the changes we made to adjust the overtime, because that's the law, we didn't have a choice. But in that situation where it's Thursday, because of us doing payroll, like we are, you know, we're having to pay on the next week, even if they have a day off, because that is a separate week, actually.
Like our L D.
But that would be, I mean, under the new system, that would be a problem for you, wouldn't it?
And we can't do it, cannot, because then we'll get in trouble.
Right, yeah, so that's one reason that we need to...
And it's all got to be...
Then the work week would be Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, if we back in that day. But I know that's still weird, it's hard, I mean, like, the police, they're the Friday before, they in prior Friday, and then, so that whole week, the new week, you know, you're not paid for that week yet, but we didn't help, nobody's going to help back like that, so...
With working with Brenda and meeting a couple of times, we had a schedule worked out, that we would have a cutoff date, and then pay every two weeks, and that looked like that scenario, that really worked well, but we're already getting a bit of a bit of static of changing the weekly check to a two-week check.
We're still going to get a twenty-six, we should still get twenty-six checks, and probably two or three months out of the year, you'd get three checks that month instead of...
There's two months, you get three checks, and then all the other ones you get two, but that's twenty-six week, I mean, twenty-six pay periods, but, I mean, I'm for whatever they want to do.
Because it's every two weeks. But it's not going over real well, we already heard this morning, there's some static out there concerning the change.
I mean, it would be a big adjustment, I mean, but it could be done, it's not something that can't be done, but...
We've got to change what we're doing.
Yeah, we've got.
We're just telling y'all that it can't go on the way it's going, it's going to affect the city in a real negative way, whether retirement system and our reporting is concerned, it's got to change, it's got to be very accurate, or the city's going to be liable for any differences.
And when we hire part-time people, like at the splash pad, or, you know, in the summer with the, like I said one time before, it may take us hiring more people, because we can only work on so many hours before we have to start paying on retirement. We've got to keep ourselves under those thresholds, or, you know, that can get us in trouble.
What do y'all suggest? I mean, we, I think all of us, the board, you have no problem of us approving whatever y'all are willing to do, because it's up to, you people know what you've got to do and what you need to do.
I don't know, we've just kicked around, right now, we're in the planning stage, because honestly, we don't know, I talked to Brenda before we, from Allen Council's office, before we came in here, and she's tried to get some smaller towns online, and it's kicking them out with very few employees, you know, nothing like us, nothing with the contributions that we have, and they keep referring to it as a go-live day, when this is going to take effect, when we're live with retirement systems and we do everything online, and it's not ready, it's just not ready. We were shooting maybe for January, that's not going to happen, maybe February, I don't look for it now, but I figured this spring, we're going to try. They've been trying to do this for over a year, and it's just, they can't figure it out either, it's just not worked every time they've tried, any different scenario they've tried, so...
We've already had several sit-downs and discussions about this change, no one that we've got to face the change, and that some of our stuff is not going to be totally accurate the way we're doing it, so we're trying to get prepared. Seeing that your questions is well-placed, I only administer this stuff, so to speak, they do the physical work, know the problems, how many problems they have with these extra reports, you know, we're doing it several different ways, it means they got to report it more often in different ways, that if we can standardize it a little bit, it would help them a good bit in their work. The two-week method seemed to be the best choice for the city, and our workers prepare the payroll and do the reporting, but we always want to keep our employees in line, too, in their feelings, so we're not, we're working a little harder for them, but it would be in the right scenario for us to do it every two weeks for everybody.
And I just, I wanted to make sure, you know, however we have to do it, and I have to remind some of the employees, I'm an employee, too, I don't just come up with this stuff to create problems, because, and I've told them, believe it or not, I'm on their side, you know, and...
Yeah, we've been told what we're going to have to do.
Yeah, and sometimes you don't have a choice.
We're kind of there at news today, but we know the news that's facing us is reality, we've got to have a reality check, and what we're doing's not going to work.
You know, and we may go online with this, like they're talking about, and it's still not worked with them, because, you know, we tried this back in, gosh, it was, what, July or August, and it didn't go through, and then they tried it again in October, so I don't think they really are prepared either. But if we could just get some basic changes in line, and I mean, if we could get feedback from the employees, if, you know, if y'all talk to them, the department heads, and they say, you know, "No, I don't want it to stay every week," that would, that would kind of help us make our decision, I think, and just do whatever we need to do, how we need to do it, but the end date will have to change, no matter what.
Now, my question, can you do it every week? Because under the circumstances, it doesn't seem like you could do it every week, I mean...
We can, I mean, it's a learning experience, I mean, I'm just, I'm being honest, I don't know what to expect. I know when Brenda and I from Allen's office went to the meeting in Montgomery, there were a bunch of other organizations there that were members of retirement system, and we were all just sitting there, literally, shaking our head like, "This is not going to work," you know, everybody was overwhelmed, you know, and I came back from the meeting like, "Oh, my Lord, this is, it's not going to work," and, but, I mean, if they're not giving us a choice, we're going to, we're just going to have to jump in there and figure it out. But, I mean, we'll get through it, and that's what I've tried to tell the employees, you know, and we may have to change it again later, if whatever we decide on right now does not work for the city, we may have to do something different later, but...
Sure, the employees will understand that you can't, you're going to do what you've got to do.
They do.
And it's not against them, it's just...
Yeah, they do.
It's what you've got to do.
I mean, you know, they're like me, they know if you want to keep your job, you're going to, you're going to do it, and, but, having said that, you know, you want to do, you want people to be happy, you don't want them, you don't want to just jump in there and do it, but...
The other part of the information that Angela brought back was the time limit that people could come back on the city and say, "You owe me, you owe me this, you owe me that," from previous times that they'd worked, when we considered them only part-time workers, and she says that there's some, not really any statutes on how long it can be, that they could come back to us, and then, is it fair word against yours, or can the records vary, I don't know, how, you know, in the archives and find all the records.
Yes, because, I mean, it's just the law that, you know, over, if we work them more hours than we're supposed to, as far as categorizing them as a part-time person, you know, I did have one employee that came back, it's been a couple of years ago, that wanted some retirement from way before I was here, I think Linda Partain was here.
Barbara Partain.
Barbara Partain, sorry, and she didn't, I don't know what circumstances were at that time, they just chose not to contribute, we can't do that anymore, you don't have a choice, it has to be done, and, but when somebody comes back like that, it costs a big portion to the city, but they have to pay a big portion, too, to buy that time back, so to speak, and, you know, once they found out how much they were going to have to pay, it never, it never came to pass, but they were talking about one scenario at that school that we went to, and they came back and had to pay like, it was five years worth. it was five years worth of contributions and things, and it, it about broke them. You know, and, and insurance is the same, you know, if we work somebody over a certain amount of time, then we, we have to offer them benefits.
So we just, we wanted the council to know what we're basing it, and our discussion here today is with intent to make some changes, especially on the cutoff date. We're not in stone yet on the two-week pay period. That's the scenario we thought was best after all of our discussions, but if it doesn't work, for a lot of people, we may reconsider that. The cutoff date's got to change, without a doubt, so we can be accurate, instead of anticipating somebody being here all day Thursday, or whether they work overtime or not, we can't be guessing at that, it's got to be totally accurate. So, Amy, you got any other thoughts on that? Is that pretty much the way you're seeing it? Amy does our insurance and payroll, and it falls on her shoulders to get it done properly and correct. Both of them are involved in the retirement system reporting, so, uh, you know, both Angela and Amy wind up in the middle of this, and Brenda is trying to keep us out of trouble, you know, from Allen's office, and she said, watch yourself closely. You could, you could find yourself in such a mess if you don't follow the rules. So that's why we.
I think some of my people's main concern was if they're that they're paying them at the end of the two-week period, are they gonna bring home the same amount of money that they would if they brought it one week?
If you play with the numbers enough, Amy, to.
I mean, I know if you if you do much, much more than ten hours overtime, then your withholdings, there's a lot more on that overtime money than there is regular, regular time. So if you've got a bigger check, basically, the, the.
And they cut more if you're way down.
Your withholdings are, are higher.
Yeah.
So that was there, you know, but, like a lot of folks, a few dollars means a lot to something, you know, it does make, but, uh, you know, it can really affect some people that way, if it's, if it's a.
All overtime, I understand it's based on your forty hour, if you paid eighty hour pay period, your, your overtime is based on that forty hour period, and then the next week, you base your overtime on that forty hour period. If you had overtime one week and didn't the other, you'd get your overtime in that week. And if you had overtime in the next week, you'd get that too.
Sure.
How it, how it comes out in payday, I can't tell you that.
Yeah, I just, you know, from experience, it the more you make, seems like the percentage of withholdings is, is higher.
It all depends on how you file, too, and everybody, you know, so, just like files single, or if you file married, one, or, you know, all of that comes into play, so.
Well, it certainly doesn't change the way the city pays, it, it might, it might change the way you get the money or the government gets the money.
Exactly, well, that's, that's the point I'm making, because.
Because your taxations could, could come into play.
I mean, we could put it out, not necessarily for a vote, but if, I mean, we could.
I'm, I'm just.
With the employees, but I mean, y'all talk to the supervisors and, and just kinda let us know what's, what you're hearing from them, if they want us to.
For actually, so we've got to have an earlier cutoff on that. We can't anticipate payroll. Any other comments on that? Uh, Tim, you're up.
I'm going. I don't know enough about this, what we're gonna talk about, so I brought somebody that is.
All right, Matt, you're up, we're gonna talk about our areas, our fire department per se today, uh, fire department premises, and I'll let you explain the comments that we've shared in our private meeting on this.
Well, it's just the day and age that we live in, it's time to, you, you need security cameras, you need to know what's going on around your premises, and uh, we've got to talking about it, and we probably have as much money in equipment that the city owns, sitting in one building as there is anywhere else in the city. Uh, with all the fire trucks and equipment and stuff that's in that, in that building. Researched a couple of different options, and obviously, if we go out to bid for a camera system, it's gonna be astronomical in price. Uh, we've, we've looked around at some prices and, uh, think that we can put a, a upper medium quality, it's not, it's not the Cadillac, but it's not the Pinto either. Uh, what, 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 what we need, uh, it's gonna take about sixteen cameras to cover that property, uh, that the fire department sits on. Uh, we feel like we can do that, uh, for about thirty-five hundred dollars, uh.
And that's us putting it in.
Yeah, that's, we talked to the mayor about this, I told him, I said, now, look, we're not, we're not looking to get in the business, because if you price it, it's gonna be two or three times that high, uh, to hire somebody to come in and do it. But I feel like that, uh, that we can, we can do it ourselves and, and get it in, get it working, and, uh, just, just get the, get the premises covered over there with some security cameras, we're doing some access control on the exterior doors right now. Matter of fact, I've got metal shavings and that insulation on my shoulder from where we've been working on it this morning. Uh, just, just, you know, trying to be good stewards of the city's equipment, make sure that we keep everything, uh, in proper working order the way it should be.
Can the new tax money be used to pay for that?
That's a question that's way above my pay grade.
It could.
But have you had any problems with anything being stolen?
Just little things.
Little things, flashlights, hoods.
Well, that's not gonna have anything to do with something like that, it's something in care way in their pocket.
Well, you'd know.
Your boot was sealed.
You'd be able to see them. And, and the flashlights, they're about a hundred bucks a pop.
See, yeah, that'd catch anybody with a flashlight, does it buzz when it goes, or just?
Well, no, I mean, you'd know who was there, it's, they're recording twenty-four hours.
I'm not trying to, yeah, I'm just.
It's they're recording twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah.
It would cover ever each of the building.
I just, I just wonder if we've been having any problem, you know?
Just some stuff like that, and we had.
Everything you spend, if you're spending thirty-five hundred dollars, then the upkeep of it, you know, and I, I'm wondering if it's, uh, worth what you're spending, are you gonna, you're not gonna have to hire any more manpower if, if.
No.
Or, or, I'm not questioning, but don't get me wrong, I, I just wanna kinda know what, you know, what we're actually doing, is I guess, what we're saying, what the upkeep's gonna be on the camera system and all of it. Usually, there's always something wrong, you gotta call somebody to be working on it.
But if you use the new tax money, it'll just fade between you two to do it.
We could.
Yeah, so it wouldn't even involve the council.
Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm not against it, I just wanna know something about it for.
There's not any kind of monthly fees or anything like that that goes along with it?
So it just be a one-time.
Be a house, DVR.
DVR records.
Just a one-time deal.
Nobody monitors it, yeah, nobody monitors it. It's like the kind of like the systems here, at the police station, is all recorded to a DVR. Go back and get the footage off of it.
After thirty days or something, or so many hours or something.
Yeah, what we're looking at doing is putting, uh, dual six terabyte hard drives in it. Even with the motion that goes on around the station, we feel like we'll get thirty-plus days on, of, of storage, and they'll be mirrored, so that if one goes out, you've still got your information. The way those things operate, they sit there and constantly record, and anytime it sees motion, it sends it to the hard drive. Usually, five seconds or three seconds before the motion starts, and three to five seconds after the motion stops, so you've got the entire clip of when that, something started moving in front of that camera.
We've talked about it, and, uh, I told you, I was, I'd rather that with us talking, those kind of dollars honestly informed what we might be considering, and see if there's really any objection to securing that building and premises around it with cameras, and, you know, if, if there's not, we'll, we'll probably move forward, and I'd rather them pay for it than us pay for it, since we've got funds available to take care of that thing.
And that way, it'll leave your money that's in your budget for something that the tax money won't pay for.
I'm perfectly fine with that.
I have no objections, no objections to it, I just wanted to know kinda what, what it, what really.
That's why I brought him.
What we were doing, yeah.
I felt like that maybe we could them handle it, but I just wanted everybody to know that the system will be up and running, and, and we, we're thinking about getting the system. If, if, if there is objections, we're gonna hear them and, and we'll honor those, you know, if not, we'll come to the city.
I certainly don't have any, I just wanna know what.
I don't have any other thoughts about that the next few hours, might have been a half. Uh, Christmas lunch, we want the council to know you're invited on the twenty-first, around twenty-one thirty and twelve, we're gonna try to meet where our seniors are meeting, the Molly Building. As soon as they clear the building, we'll come in behind and have our employees' Christmas lunch, and we want the council to come and dine us, that's on the twenty-first. Uh, I want y'all to be thinking about this one. My cleanup the ugly places in town has not, not worked real well. We got a little response with our letters and our efforts, but I think we need more response, and as y'all think of these places you want me to address, get the word to me, and I'll do the addressing, I just want y'all to be mindful of places that need to be addressed, that are in the city limits, whether it's houses or businesses. It's, they're showing tendencies to junk up our town, or do not keep their places by our ordinances, I'd like to address these places early this spring, I'm, I'm looking for a list to, to start on this spring, kinda what we're gonna call some spring cleanup. Uh, we've been working on some individual cases this past week, we've got some good responses on some areas that we've actually got one landlord that's been calling back his help, has been calling in to the desk saying, uh, do we have some other places that need some attention? So, we're trying to address some of these real ugly places in our town that, uh, need a good cleanup, and where there've been too many broke-down cars parked around them, uh, just unkempt properties, abandoned properties. We've got a few spots I know about already that are burned out, but I'm trying to get me a list together, and I want y'all to help with this. We're gonna try to do a better job addressing that, we didn't get quite the response this past year that we wanted, so we're gonna work a little harder. Uh, I've had folks.
So, how is that working? You're sending the letter, they have seven days to clean it up, and then somebody goes back out, who goes out after that seven days?
Well, the follow-up is the problem.
Okay, because after the seven days, if it's not cleaned, they're automatically in violation.
Yeah.
And they're to be fined or put in jail.
Yeah.
So who's, I mean.
Well, some of them, we've gone back and we give them the citation, they've been in court, uh, some of them have not. They've done part of the work, they haven't done all the work, so they're gonna convince the judge that in a few days, they're gonna do the work, so. Me and Wade Hollis have got one on tipper system right now. He asked for so many days, we give him those days, he put it on his calendar, and we're working that one on an individual basis, and so, actually, the police department, uh, goes back.
Okay, and then if?
The police department goes out, and the police department goes back if they hand deliver.
And then they report to Marla?
And Marla, Marla actually, uh, brings them into court if they haven't done what they're supposed to do.
But then, I mean, after the seven days is up, if they're in violation, they get another citation in seven more days, and then Mike goes out and cleans it up and fixes a bill, and then it, there's twenty-eight days to pay Mike's bill, so.
Well, we have got to let it stay true.
Okay, so we're just stopping after the seven?
We haven't got the, the Mike cleaned up.
Okay, so we're stopping at the seven, okay, so that's, that may very well be the, the biggest problem is, you know, we're doing, uh, we're doing the seven days.
We, we have to clean it up to get his bill paid, is, is the big problem.
But, you know, that was one of the reasons.
Well, I thought you put a lane on my house.
We did.
On the property, you know, that.
That's, that's the third step, you know, if, if the, after the first seven days, they're in violation, then after the next seven days, if it's not clean, then it's turned over to the street department, and they clean it up, and, and their bill is assessed, and then I think there's twenty-eight days to pay their bill.
Yeah.
And, and then after that, I mean, so if we're not making it to the second step, it's sorta like we're just talking and not doing it.
Look, the follow-up, the follow-up is, is the biggest issue. We have had some folks that have actually paid some fines in this past year for violations. Uh, it hasn't always succeeded in the total cleanup, most of these people make a good stab at it. Some folks have a little bit different opinions to what cleaning up is. Some folks say, if I throwed it over in the pickup bay, that's cleaned up, but pickups broke down and sitting there, it's been there four years. And the pickup bay won't owe nothing else, but, you know, that's their idea of cleaning up their place. So, it gets a little bit, uh, it's, it's hard to sit at my desk and, and, and get this done, I, you just, I have to put legs on this to make it happen, and we can direct traffic all day, but if we don't go out and physically follow it up to the U R I, you know, it doesn't really get the job done. I noticed one bill in the paper, students go aggressive the same night as my friend, that even the mayor said, I run businesses and people have suggested I clean up my business, and, you know, he has a business center where things can get looking bad and people complain. A lot of times, it just happens, and folks don't realize how bad, they've got used to it, and they don't realize how bad it looks. Our town's had lots of ugly spots, and I am interested in trying to urge people to clean up our city and, and make it better.
Well, I don't think we need to add to the list until we finish the first list. I mean, there's no sense in us coming up with a second list for the spring if we hadn't finished the first list from last spring.
We had, uh, we had a couple of houses on Lover's Lane there that were vacated and had been that way, and that one of them's partially burned. Ownership's changed, I don't know, I haven't found out what the plan for those houses are, but Chief, do you know anything about that partially burned-out house and why it burned?
Where?
At the head of Lover's Lane there, right past the project on my lawn.
The fire cause is officially still under investigation.
It might have had some hair, sure. We'll just leave it at that.
It's happened along with Wath's brother, those two houses, I think he bought it, didn't he?
I, I don't know.
I'll have somebody else listed as the owner for that.
Yeah.
I suppose we're not citing that place as being worse than others, it's just one that we had on the radar, and now it's, it's uglier than it was when it's sitting there not burned. So, things like that, if they're just torn down and, and removed, it'd look a lot better. But, we've got many places that look as bad or worse than that. But we've got many places that look as bad or worse than that. We just want to make sure that our citizens realize they have some responsibility to keep their places decent. Maybe we won't lift on that list too much till we get these other things coming. But if you think of some place you want us to address other than what we have, we don't mind adding a few. Methodist district, street closing has kind of been, uh, something that's been on the prop burner, but undecided. Scott's got a little information. I believe they've discussed about that and we, we might be willing to move forward based on this information.
Mike and I met down there this morning with. Jim, Jim, Humbrich, Humbrich, I would like to name, and it was Jeremy Streeman. And the, the big issue was the corner north on the side street, uh, people turning in there. And we met with them and the church was willing to give us more room there on the corner. We're working out, getting Jeremy something, um, to put it down officially in the paper, but we marked off an area there on the corner that it needed, that the city could have. There's a lot of steps that would need to go into that, moving the power pole and redo the ditch and culvert, but, um, but they would be willing to give us property on that corner.
And who's responsible for all the, the moving the power pole and fixing the culvert and doing the ditch and?
Well, I have to do the ditch and I have to do the culvert, power pole, we'll have to check on it.
Are you talking about on the lower end giving us, probably the lower board at Ackenberg?
That is, yeah, that's right.
But when you come back toward this other end, between those two power poles, there's only twenty three and a half feet. The road there is only twelve feet and less than six inches, so, I mean, there's.
The road is actually twenty feet there. It's just got grass.
It's just grown up, okay, because the, but between the power poles, there's just twenty three feet.
I didn't actually measure between the pole and pole, but, um, one of those poles is just a support pole for one of the other poles, looks like to me, but, yeah. Anyway, those things would, would be dependent probably upon.
So, there's gonna have to be some, uh, some, some work done at the.
Should be any of the work done at the, at the south end of it.
There should be what now?
I, I can't see any reason to do any work on the south end of it.
Well, two cars can't meet between those poles and stay on the road as it is now.
Well, I guess the point is that's a road now and if they can't meet now, closing that other side street has no effect on that whatsoever.
It's gonna increase the traffic though, that much more.
I don't think it's gonna increase the traffic.
You don't think so?
Watching, watching that traffic, people use that as a cut through and.
When I was down there, the ladies were trying to get to the beauty shop and because I was parked, they couldn't get around my car because of how I was in the road. So, they're having trouble based on my experience this morning, you can't meet right there.
And, I mean, and, uh, I'm just saying, that's there now.
Right.
That issue is there now. I, from, when we previously had it, that street observed and then just from what we were seeing out there this morning. People are just cutting off that, which is actually illegal, going through there on the private property, cutting back over through Hardee's or coming back out on US two seventy eight. Just avoiding the traffic light, which again is illegal, but, um, there's gonna be new property on, on that shopping center and that, that action may be stopped by them anyway. People are just shooting through.
So, you don't think that that's gonna increase the traffic down there by closing that hill?
On the alley, no.
You don't think so?
What about the people that park? I noticed this morning, three or four vehicles on the lot. Maybe on the north side of the street, it's too cold.
We're talking about the Methodist parking lot?
Right. Is that gonna affect them or?
That would be, that's the Methodist church's parking lot and if they allow it, um, I assume that would still be okay. But that would be a question. It's, they're parking there now and it's private property now. So, the Methodist church still wanted to allow them, because we were talking with them about there's, there's going to have to be something done one way or the other about that street. Either affixing a permanent closing, we're talking about on forty three, um, or to have. More of a gate or something along those lines, or to leave it open for private access. But, um, but the Methodist church will need to get that out about what's the best route to, to take with that. But they would need, they're gonna have to leave it open to have access to that parking lot either on the west end or on the east end of that potentially vacant street.
Well, now at the meeting, they said that they would close the west end.
Yeah, and I think that might be a little bit of a question.
That would be pretty much, I think, up to Aldott what.
Do you, do you think we need to write now with what's happening at the shopping center? Something's fixing to happen at the shopping center is my understanding, what they're gonna do and we don't know exactly what they're gonna do. Whether they're gonna have businesses in there or they're gonna have a school in there. We actually don't know. Do you think that we should do anything right now until we find out what's going to happen there? If we go do something now that we'll be sorry, there's nothing we can ever do about it again. The only way you're gonna have out of there to have a good outlet is gonna be the front side. You're not gonna have an outlet anyway. You get back to highway forty three and let them go, because like I said, it's narrow down that street.
That, that's.
And, and I'm not trying, I'd like to see everybody says, I sure don't wanna mess with the church. I, that's, you know, but I hate to, I, I, I'm not talking about, you know, right now it's not bothering anybody, but what you, what you may have is the future of our.
Sure, and ideally.
And I, I, I don't know that.
Ideally, like Timmy mentioned and Mike had pointed out about how it's growing up there, that those, there's a set of three power poles there. When that road gets narrow, there's two, one of which, as Mike indicated, seems to be a support. There's also a gas pipeline notice there, so I don't know what we can do with that. Ideally, if that street is gonna be, we might would need to look at widening it or officially cleaning it out or whatever. But it, it's just a bad little area. That might be a fair point to see what they're going to do with that shopping center. I know they have talked about, there is that myth of a city street that's around the shopping center in front or back and who knows about, about us closing yet. Which I don't think it technically exists, but it's just on some maps. But it might be beneficial to do that. I think it's up to the city to close the street or not close the street. But I think it's, it would be an appropriate street to close. But if y'all want to see what they're going to do, uh, and I'm not for sure if, if we know what that answer is or if they know what that answer is yet. Uh, I think they had some plans, but I don't know how concrete those plans.
And I think we need to know what Aldott's gonna recommend, because if they're gonna say, no, it can't be permanently closed.
Which, they can't stop us from closing it.
Okay, but you're saying that.
The only thing they can control is the access in and out of it.
Right, so, I mean, but we need to know if they're gonna say, yes, you can put a sidewalk there and nobody can use it or it's, you're free to do whatever you want. Or did I miss what y'all were saying?
Well, no, I think Aldott would be okay with whatever the Methodist church wanted to do.
And they set a sidewalk.
My concern, as I expressed to them, would be if they came in, if the Methodist church came in and said, put a sidewalk, curb and gutter and just close that off. If at some point in time in the future, if they decided, well, we want that to be a private, you know, drive into the church and into the parking lot. That that Aldott may not give them permission. Once it's closed, closed off, they may say it's too close to the intersection. So, it may be something that they want to keep, when I use the word open, I mean just not closed off.
Right.
Uh, just to keep that as an existing portal into highway forty three, because. From their parking lot. From their parking lot.
But how is that gonna solve their safety issue if it's left?
Well, they can, I mean, they, they can somehow block it off like a drive, but, um, but just from a permanent standpoint, from Aldott's perspective, they, it may ruin that use. They may choose to, to close off the east end of the park, of the street and not the west end of it. That would be up to them.
I think what's more they need to know, because that was their issue, was the safety and the people coming down that hill and the kids going across when they try to go to their playground.
You know, I think either way, they're going to close it. That would keep people from, from having accidents in and out like that.
Well, if we had a few more feet down that alley down through there, it would be no problem closing that, because then the traffic could go. Down in front of the restaurants and barber shops and go out down there. But the way, the only problem we got now with it for the future and what it, the reason I say, what are they gonna do with that shopping center? Because if we get blocked from having a way out, you know what's gonna happen on two seventy eight over there. That's gonna be, anybody wanting to go toward Hackenberg is gonna have to go in.
But, but the church was willing to, to give us what, uh, we feel like is necessary, from Mike when he looking at it, to widen it there in front of. Where the restaurant, the restaurant is, the barber shop and the.
On down through there?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, that'd be fine if they widen it down through there and give, so they turn.
That was the big issue.
Yeah, it's not wide. It gets narrow as you go out. I never dreamed of that.
And that's where they were.
It's like this. It gets like this.
Yeah, and that's where they're willing to give us the property if we need it to.
Yeah, to widen the road, okay. If the church is willing to do that, I'm a hundred, personally, I don't, I don't think we can do any better, you know. Because then the traffic will have room to go down through there and you won't be cut off from highway forty three north. Without going back to the red light, getting out on that, which is gonna be a busy road.
Ideally, I think what this would do is it would force traffic to go the way traffic is intended to go.
Yeah.
Go, go to the traffic light and use that and use those streets merely as access points for that smaller shopping center and larger shopping center. As opposed to just be cutting through, coming through. And, and at some point, we may decide to just make that a one-way street, you know, and that would solve. I mean, those are easy things to fix without even having to.
But it, you know, as what it, down at the end there, I didn't know that it was, yeah, it's, if that was widened out with the other, you would never have a problem, because you got enough room there for two lanes.
Yeah, and that's, that's where they're willing to, yeah, give us the extra property.
Yeah, okay. I, I, I don't, personally, I went down and looked at it and I didn't realize that it's come in that much down there. And if they'll do that, I don't see where we got any problem with it personally, if it's going ahead and somebody else, y'all may want to go look at it before you go there. But I, I.
Let me get feet down that.
If it was all as wide as this, there wouldn't be a problem, but it's not. That's not what we're talking about.
Well, we just kinda eyeballed it, but.
See right in here?
Yeah.
It's much more narrow.
Quarter off of that.
If you get out there, it's, it's not all this width.
Start off.
But you can see land there. They're coming out.
It'd be straight off.
All the way down here at the end, so this is still gonna be there.
We'll go up to the fence, it just can be wide.
This is the fence.
Well, wherever the grass is there, there's three or four feet of grass there that you can move on.
About eight or ten feet of grass there. Eight or ten, if we need to move over some, there's, there's some room there to move over if we need to. Honestly, I can't see it as an issue. I mean, it's too far. If, if two thick cars keep passing in a twenty three foot square swipe there, there's, there's more trouble than the road.
And that's, oh, that's twenty three feet in the park, where they're parking, old barber shop. You're not talking about twenty three feet in the building?
No, it's from, our street, most of our street down through there, all the way down to those two power poles, about twenty three feet wide. As you get towards those power poles in there.
There's twenty three feet, a little over twenty three feet between those two houses. But you see the street itself is just about twelve and a half feet.
Yeah.
So, we need more road. And there's a big hole right there over here.
We just want anything on our agenda that could be confusing or leave a lot of open questions. I don't want y'all to have to vote blind, you know, on matters like this that have significant importance to specific needs. And I wanted more information as to what kind of cooperation we're gonna get from the church and the church officials. If you need to ask for a few feet of property there on that north end where it narrows. Or, um, any of you feel insecure about voting because you're afraid you're going to try, you know, people moving on those streets. But I, I really think with a little bit of property on that corner where it narrows, we could fix all the rest of that. If it needs fixed, we can fix it with existing properties there and not affect the patrons of those businesses.
So, you're saying go ahead and vote without seeing what the shopping center's gonna do?
I think we need to wait and see what they're gonna do.
I don't know how much planning and how far reaching that those plans are. I don't think.
I can check on that now.
Yeah, yeah. I've tried to make a call this week to Samuel and find out the status of. I had some other questions come up on the shopping center and I tried to get a conversation going, never could get to the right number. I kept getting answering services, so I'm gonna make another attempt to talk to him. Be gone, produce a call on that too, Scott.
And then you two down there. Want you to show the cars parked up in front of the barber shops and all. Cars parked there, how much room that leaves from the end of those cars over to the fence, you know. If there's enough room then for two cars to meet there.
Yeah, well, his, his parking lot goes beyond the back end of those cars. He owns that, he owns that.
Who does?
Pete, yes. Yeah, I didn't know who, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'd, I'd like to, I went down there, but, but just me down there and somebody to know.
Yeah, we go down there right after.
Yeah, and it's, we can settle this or not. We need to, main thing, we don't know what's gonna be done down, what they're gonna do. And we need, may not find out in this two years and we'll be out of it.
We, we wanna do this in detail. We, we won't try to put this on the Monday agenda then. We'll hold up for another, for another meeting. You won't see this issue on the Monday night agenda. I just wanted to have some more open discussion on it. So, we, we had several questions about the matter and I didn't want these questions unanswered. When we vote, I want everybody to vote with a clear mind on what's gonna be and not what is, but this is gonna be the way to be. Then, then you'll know that you're leaving, won't vote for the closing or against the closing.
Mike, I, I'm not, I want you to understand, I'm not against the Methodist church. I think you know that. A hundred percent, you know, but what we've gotta look out for right now is the future of our. And if whatever's happens right here now, that's the way it's gonna be from now on. And if there's not enough room to get two cars down through there and that thing's ever developed, it's gonna be a blocking and a way for the little old piece, little old place. And if a car's getting out of there that wants to go toward Hackenberg, because it's gonna be that way from now on. If we, whatever we do now, this council, whatever we do with the church now, that's the way it'll be, you know. You know, from the way to be with doing anything. And it needs to be settled now. We need, we need it to be fair to everybody, the church and the city, I hope.
I mean, I don't disagree with what you're saying, I just.
Yeah. Now, we got by. The only reason, somebody, when we was talking before, somebody said something about the Baptist church. Well, there's no problem there with getting from here to there, because all you got there is a street going down both sides. And what was happening there didn't, didn't have anything to do with this problem. And what was happening there, it didn't, didn't have anything to do with this problem. It's, it's different, every problem is different, and there, well, you know, you go down both streets and, and the only reason that street wasn't closed before, you know, there's one lawyer in Houndon that jumped up and down, and then I found it, but that needs, you know, it wasn't just for the church, it was-
Well, my personal opinion is that there's plenty of access.
Yeah.
You know, you've got a hope, you've got two or three accesses going into the shopping center.
Right.
Yeah. You've got access coming in right behind the Methodist church. And, and the point being, I think people are using that because they don't wanna go through the red light.
Probably so.
Yeah, so if, if, you know, we're trying to fix a problem that's probably not gonna be, we're trying to have a solution for, for something that's probably not a problem.
Yeah.
You know, uh, if, if people were advised by the law and go through their proper traffic lights. So that's, that's the, the way I see it.
Yeah, but you know, you know, according to what they develop out there, it's gonna be busy on that two seventy-eight. Getting in and out even that shopping center, not-
I agree.
You know, it's gonna be busy, if they do what-
We hope it's busy.
Yeah, yeah, we hope it is, yeah, yeah. And as long as everything develops down through there, it's gonna be busy, and we, what I'm looking at, we don't need in the future down the road, stopping up something-
Thing is, when Milligan's owned that property there, I'm not sure that, that street went down behind the playground. So it was, it was, that street was put in there a- after the shopping center and after the Milligan's property was sold to the church, or donated, whatever they did to it. Uh, so I don't know.
I remember when that street didn't go all the way through there.
Yeah, and there's another lower down there that goes in, behind it was that subposition, right there.
I've done, I've done Milligan's house a lot of times when I personally worked for the bank on the corner there, and that street didn't go all the way through there, it's gonna be on that property. But anyway, it does now. Uh, we'll try to clarify all these questions, I appreciate everybody coming to tell you, if anybody got anything specific you want to bring up today.
I would have talked this committee if I could about the situation we got at the shop, two shops. Yeah. We're, we're trying to get in compliance with A D M on, on the shop.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought this up.
And it's gonna cost several thousand dollars, you know, and we're looking at different ways of going about trying to get in compliance. Uh, our fuel, fueling system down there is on the blink, uh, so we're, we're, we're looking at doing a different type refueling thing, situation for all, all departments. Uh, right now, just a small part of it is, we, we're having to do something about our burnt motor oil. With our, the way we're, we've got a tank in the ground now that, that we can eat to into, uh, that's gonna have to be dug up and replaced, and just a tank to store burn oil is twenty-seven hundred something dollars. Well, that, along with, we're gonna have to build two concrete pads, one for our wash bay, and one for our refueling system. And that's probably gonna be another ten or fifteen thousand dollars for those.
So you decided not to go with the cards and filling up at the new station?
We haven't decided yet, that's what we're, yeah.
So do you know the difference in the, I mean, how much is it?
All I can tell you is, if you use the card and, and, uh, Tim is probably more familiar with that than I am.
Well, I got something on it, I get something on it every year, I don't know why it comes, it's actually cheaper.
Yeah, what we do, the way we bid our guests now is we get, we put it out for bid, and it's mostly these local people that bid it out. Which is actually higher than the state bid price. So we could go to those cards, and you, you could go to any, any station and fill up, and it would be automatically bid, the state bid price.
So it'll be cheaper to do the card?
Yeah.
Cheaper to do the cards, and then we wouldn't have to build that, then we don't have the system to maintain, we don't have the concrete to pour.
One pad, one pad, of course, yeah. We're still gonna have to build a pad for our wash bay. Uh, and we're also gonna have to add a fence up at the front to keep-
You had some boosters last night?
Yeah. Uh, that's actually considered a transfer station, and that has to be permitted too. So, uh, I'm just trying to avoid a bunch of expense that I wanted to get y'all's approval to, you know, to move forward, uh, I didn't wanna do, well, another thing is the fueling system month, or the, uh, the monitoring system that keeps up with who buys how much fuel and all that stuff. That system has been in there fifteen or so years, and my understanding, it was obsolete when they put it in the first time. And so now we're having trouble programming key fobs so that the individuals can come in and get gas, so that's gonna have to be replaced. And that's probably a fifteen or twenty thousand dollar deal there, and that, and if we could just eliminate that part, uh, we could do away with our fuel tanks, we would still have to keep our fuel, or we've got a pickup that's got a hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank in it that we have to keep, we'd keep diesel fuel in it to drive out to wherever our tractors and stuff are, to, to refuel those, but I think, my opinion is, we'd be a money ahead to try to go to the car system.
Amy's checking on that, she's, I give her the information on it, just to check on it.
And another thing too is, is, uh, I don't, I'm not sure about the exact cost of it, but we may be cheaper in the long run to contract somebody to do service on our police cars, our work trucks at, at our, our shop, as far as oil changes and, and brakes and those minor stuff. Uh, we still have the shop there to do any type, major type stuff that we can do there, but as far as the minor stuff, it's oil and, and, uh, brake jobs and that kind of stuff, we might could contract that out to somebody else and, and, uh,
So basically-
And come out, come out a little bit ahead on that, instead of having to deal with the, get, getting rid of the oil, storing the oil till somebody can come get it, and, and and then them coming back monitoring everything that we're doing down there, just try to-
And having to pay people too.
Yeah, yeah, well, what would, we're still gonna have to keep a mechanic, you know, there's some things that you wouldn't wanna do as far as, we gotta change injectors on the police car, which used to be a pretty common, pretty common thing, but we've about got that problem solved, but you know, engine repairs and stuff like that, we probably still wanna do it in the shop. But that would free up that guy that we're paying now, uh, and free him up to do other things that we could use him for, other than mechanic type stuff, a few hours a day maybe. Just thoughts, now, I'm not, I'm just-
Well, back to these cards, uh, if we switch over to the cards, it keeps up with, everybody that has a card-
It would keep, it-
We would be able to keep up with who got, who filled up, like if the fire department filled up fifteen vehicles, we'd know that it was the fire department.
You'd know the individual that filled it up, and what vehicle.
And individual that filled it up. And what vehicle, and the mileage, it would have a mileage, you'd have to put in mileage to get the gas.
See, it would actually be a better monitoring system than what, you know, we know who, who gets gas now, but we don't know what vehicle it goes in, or we just know he got twenty-five.
Sounds like it's a better program than what we've got, and save us a bunch of money of building what you're talking about.
So- What we would need to do would be to work it so that we run out of gas in our tanks and swap over at the same time.
Yeah.
Pretty much close, so there's no waste, so that when the tanks are filled up, there's no-
Yeah, we need to use up- Yeah. We need to use up what's in our tanks as much as we can get most of it out. Uh, I think we could just close those gates on the fuel, on the tanks and stuff there, and just shut those down, and I think we would be, be fine if we just closed them to where nobody can get to them, I think A D M would be fine with that, if they check them and they're empty and such as that.
Did we decide we don't have a leak in our tank?
We do not have a leak in our tank, uh, so we, we've got that problem solved.
We thought we might have it only a half.
Our, we had, uh, one of our nozzles was letting fuel go into the catch tank, I guess you'd say, if it's what we've got.
Now, you're saying if we go to that, we do away with this money, you were fixing to tell us about the twenty thousand dollars on tanks and all of that.
I think so, yeah, yeah, well, certainly if we quit using those tanks, we can do away with the pad out front.
Yeah, go to cars.
Uh, we might have to do a little bit of cleanup around it, and, and get, but that's not, I mean, that-
And we wouldn't have to invest in any monitoring system, so, so basically what you need to tell us is once you get the okay, how long's it gonna be before it goes into effect? How much time is there between
Well, I can, I mean, that-
The okay and getting the cards and shutting down and-
Yeah, we get, probably fifteen hundred gallons or so every two weeks or so of fuel, of decent fuel and, and gas, so, uh, I would say within-
I would think it would be pretty quick.
Within a month, in a month, for sure.
So- Now, we'd be better off, or as well, probably better off to do that, I believe from what you're saying, we'd do a lot better off.
I know on our price of our fuel, we'd, we'd, we'd save money there.
Plus, plus keeping it.
Yeah, yeah, because we're gonna have to invest, if we keep it there, and we wanna continue to monitor how much gas each person gets, and what vehicle it goes in, or what department it goes to, uh, we're gonna have to reinvest in a system that's gonna be more up to, that will let us actually monitor, we can't even, right now, I can't even go in there and download what people's-
No, no.
Yeah, I've got a report I have to do once a month, and I'm not gonna, unless I get that fixed some way or another, I'm not even gonna print that report out.
No, we need this done for the first of the year, but my question is, how will the bill come? Once, if everybody's got cards, everybody's going to fifteen different places, would we get fifteen different bills, or will we get one bill from the card people?
I think that would be-
I think we'll come to one bill and it's taken down.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Because I think when Amy talked to them, like the card would stay with that vehicle, because she's got to provide the VIN number and the tag number of each vehicle that's gonna be driven.
Yeah.
And then list each person that's driving it, and those people would actually get a PIN number, I think?
Everybody, everybody would get a PIN number.
So when they-
But the card would stay with the vehicle.
So it's not gonna create any more extra work for Amy or the year, because it'll be automatic, so.
It's automa, it's automatic.
The card actually stays with the vehicle.
That's what they told her.
Yeah, the card stays with the vehicle, you get a PIN number.
So pretty much, when you know you're fixing to run out of gas, how, how long does it take to get the cards?
She's checking on that.
Okay, so probably not, Monday night, we won't know anything, but after the first of the year, soon after the first of the year, we'll have an idea.
I mean, I can tell them, don't bring any more fuel.
Yeah, but we can't be running back. Right, so, but I mean, after, this'll be our last work session till like the sometime in January.
Just to be safe, I would say it's probably gonna be-
The middle or end of January.
Probably be in January before we have to-
Before the first.
Does Elber, Elber Station have to agree?
No, no, you can go to any station.
They don't give a choice, I think.
It'd be just like going out there with, with your debit card or, or credit card.
Well, I know, we used to have credit cards like that, but I run into a place that they didn't accept them. So I mean, what I'm saying is, if, if, if anybody in town, if they would accept them, you know?
Can they refuse?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
No, I had never, and, and the state uses the same, is pretty much the same system. And when I've been with Jason's, far more than he's, he just goes up there and puts it in, types it up in.
I was talking to one of the collectors the other day, and, and, of course, they can use a card out of town, I mean, wherever they are, they can use the card.
Yeah.
You don't run out.
And he just comes up and-